Bruce will take statements from the public. Do you have, Kelly, are you?
Yeah. We have something to read to you. We had a little meeting down at Pete's Pete, a bunch of merchants did, and they asked me to read this from here. It's important to remember, this is a discussion about ideas. No one is setting any, set in stone at this point. We're merely collecting community input so that we can let Endot know what our community would like to see. On Monday, August 5th, a group of about forty businessmen on Main Street discussed the upcoming 2017 Main Street reconstruction project. The group discussed several opportunities, concerns, and issues, and seemed to come up with some conclusions below our list of the issues discussed. Left-hand turn lanes. Most of those intended, attended or opposed to left-hand turn lanes due to the fact of having them would result in loss numerous parking spaces on Main Street. Even without creating left-turn lanes, there does not seem to be desire to take advantage of the opportunity to do so, or to make sure that traffic is not regularly backed up as a result of those left at the intersections. Some suggestions included creating a little more room at the intersections to give drivers a greater comfort of going around the individuals who are stopped at the turn. Another idea was asking Endot about putting in a light that would have a left turn for a short period of time before it allows the traffic to start. Wider Main Street. Most seem to support asking Endot to widen Main Street on both sides if possible. Even if the spaces gain a foot or two would help the parking work, would be required. The desire to widen Main Street must be weighed against how much additional disruption during the construction period. As a result, how much wider Main Street might become more weighted against how much longer the construction will take. The widening of Main Street, likely only the issue from Third to Eighth Street or Ninth. It's not much an issue from Ninth to the north. As a result, not being necessary to worry about widening Main Street from the Ninth to the north. Parking meters. Regret that there has to be some form of regulating parking on Main Street. Many business owners feel that parking meters should remain on Main Street. However, it seems to be consensus that the current parking meters are insufficient because they do not work, and those that do work are inconsistent. This provides a deterrent customers parking on the streets. If parking meters are going to remain, it'll be advisable to look into new parking meters and get rid of the current parking meters. It might also be worth discussing other alternatives to regulate the parking on Main Street without meters. If meters are not kept on Main Street, there needs to be a suitable plan, regulated parking on Main Street. Ninth and Main Street intersection. There is substantial legitimate concern about among the residents living close to the intersection of Ninth Street and Main Street regarding the discussion of changes in the intersection. A study that has been conducted by Endot on this issue should be considered and presented to those residents before any decisions are made regarding that area. Streetlights. There seems to be a consensus that the opportunity to replace the current streetlights with more decorative streetlights. Trees on Main Street. There was discussion regarding whether the trees on Main Street would be replaced. If they're replaced, many believe it would be nice to have a consistent, appropriate type of tree on Main Street. It's also very important that there be a commitment to maintain the trees if they are to be replaced. If there is no commitment to maintain the trees, it may be best not put the holes in the new sidewalks for trees. Sidewalks. New sidewalks would be appreciated in some locations where sidewalks are new, where the sidewalks are newer. Other sidewalks should be consulted or to be determined whether or not they would like to have the sidewalks replaced. There's also discussion regarding whether it would be possible for the sidewalks to be done prior to the Main Street being done. This is a question for Endot. Limestone curbing. It's extremely important that the limestone curbing be preserved. According to John Newman, he certainly is one of the most knowledgeable about the historical content of the community and how it relates to the rest of the state as anyone. Brookville might be the only community that has limestone curbs. It is important to stress to Endot that we expect them to be observed, the limestone curbs. Commitment from Endot. There's obviously a concern that this project itself is overly burdensome on the business owners. The town needs to seek commitment from Endot regarding the length of the project and that the DOC will be able to keep traffic open on Main Street throughout the duration of the project. Action items. In addition to considering the above issues and discussing with Endot, the following seem to be the most important action that the town can take immediately. Number one, there seems to be consensus among business owners that the most important thing the town could be doing between now and the project commences in 2017 is identifying and creating additional off-street parking. Because parking on Main Street would be extremely difficult and limited while the project is being completed in 2017. For business to remain profitable, their customers have to have places to park. Additional parking will be comparative to those during the project, will be extremely beneficial to them after the project is over. A large map identifies locations that should be explored for additional parking. Areas marked in yellow represent current parking areas that can be improved. Areas marked in pink represent the areas that can be easily developed and additional parking. Please keep in mind, these are just ideas of locations, and they involve pieces of property that are owned by private individuals. All we're asking is the town to look into the opportunity to making some of these public parking to benefit all business as well as the customers. This is absolutely no desire to force anyone who owns a property to allow, become a public parking. However, there is no reason to have, not to have this discussion about what opportunities might exist and will be beneficial to everyone. Business owners simply feel it would be appropriate to start discussion concerning these pieces of property now, and there are possible avenues to create public parking in the areas. Areas demonstrated on the map are certainly not exhaustive, and there will be additional areas where parking may be created. Once created, these parking areas should be clearly marked parking rather than unique parking signs. It may be best to utilize the reflective blue sign with a large P that is universally recognized as identifying parking locations. Again, these are simple ideas and concepts that we need to discuss. It is our desire to have the opportunity to look at any studies and information available by Endot. Our desire is to maintain the open communication so that we can continue to have input regarding this project.
Thank you. Any other comments? Statements from the public?
I'm Randy Kneeman. I would like to have maybe five, ten minutes of your time on it. Is that all right?
Sure.
I am from Save-A-Lot, and I'm actually owner. I've been owner for twenty-two years. And I don't know, has anybody in this room ever been through a project like this before? Well, that's what I'm here for. I've been through it four times. I've closed four stores. It is not a pretty situation. I'm not saying the road doesn't need to be done. The road needs to be done, but historically, when you bring on Endot and a contractor like Milestone or Amer, and if you do not hold their hands and give them strict rules of operations, they will make a mess of things. They, they'll come in and do what they want at all cost to, and they couldn't care less about the businesses. They take their checks at the end of the day and go home. Even with road openings, what my experience has been, they're claiming they're going to keep the road open, which is fine, but even with leaving the road open, you have your elderly people and the female population that will not drive through construction. You're going to take away fifty percent of the traffic flow and the customers right off the back. They will not drive through it for, either they don't want their car dirty, they don't want damage, or they don't want to be an inconvenience for the customers. Either way, they will not go through. Every situation I've been in, that is what happens. The other side of it, timeframe, Batesville project, Pearl Street, eight-month project, ended up being two years. Lawrenceburg, Lawrenceburg was a year and a half. North Vernon, I've never seen any go under a year and a half. As soon as they touch utilities, you add a year to the project. So I think one of the lines I read was, the water line, if they widen the street, they may have to move the water line. You're adding a year to the project as soon as utilities are involved. The other thing nobody's even discussed is the ADA requirements. Where all your ramps going up the sidewalks, current code now on them, they have to be sold out and put in red, poured back in red and cement. You got a hundred of them downtown. Nobody's even discussed it doing that. And that's a, that's a major project just within itself, changing all your ADA ramps. There's a lot of underlying stuff here that I see is going to happen. And what, what happens is people that's never been through this, they, they look at the finished project, and yes, it will be beautiful. You'll look down Main Street and you can visualize, you know, new sidewalks and curbs and trees and all that. Yes, it's beautiful, but at what cost? Typically, the businesses that survive through something like this, you'll end up, at the end of the day, when it's all over with, you'll end up with lawyers, insurance offices, real estate offices, professional businesses. But the retail businesses usually don't survive. And you, like I say, you can go to Walnut Street in Lawrenceburg, I can take you any time around here. Pearl Street in Batesville. Rushville just went through, Rushville lost twenty-two businesses during their course of construction. I mean, it's, I don't want to be a naysayer, but man, you gotta go in there and open eyes. It's, it's, there's a downside to it. Don't look at the finished product. And, and that's what, and even during the course of the construction, me and Kelly talked outside, they'll promise you stuff, and once that road construction guy gets on site, he's looking at, okay, how can I make my company the most money and get this job done? He, he's not from around here. He lives North Vernon or Seymour. He don't care about you guys or us guys. He's, he's going to do whatever makes his job easier so he can get out of there. So even during the course of construction, you have to have somebody holding their hands, somebody with authority and checking them every day and saying, okay, are you changing the scope of work? Because they will change the scope of work during construction. Me and Kelly were talking, what town was that? They promised to leave the road open.
Fortville.
Fortville.
I talked to ladies afternoon.
They promised to leave the road open? No, they shut it down. But even leaving the road open, you're taking away a lot of business.
You're destroying my business.
Yeah.
You'll destroy Wild Bill's business because the average person, Jane Klinky, doesn't say, well, let's go down to Keys of the Past and buy antiques.
Sir, you did not, you do not have the floor.
But, but I guess what I'm saying, so you're saying, okay, here's all the negative. You know, but I do agree, the road needs to be done. I do agree that some sidewalks need to be done, but don't throw the baby out in bathwater. Don't take all their money and, and try to get, you know, fix the sidewalks where it needs to be fixed instead of, you know, mass doing it. And I know for a fact that they're going to have to address this ADA thing. I mean, that's a give.
We brought that, we brought that up.
Well, I didn't see it in the paper, but if you drive down through town, there's a ton of them. I mean, there's a mess of them down through town. So somewhere, there's got to be a comprehensive plan to do this without destroying, because businesses, you lose them once they don't come back. Your franchise businesses will stay around. You know, you have McDonald's, Family Dollar. You know, you'll keep your lawyers, your insurance office, your real estate offices because they're professional. They, they can go to their customers if their customers can't get to them. But as far as the retail end of it, it's usually not pretty for our end. And I talked to my wife about it, and then there's a whole other end of it. I mean, the emotional end of it. I don't know if I could live through another one. It's, it's that depressing. You know, you open your business up and they can't get to your business. You stand there and look at a door that nobody's coming through. It's, it's tough. And I just wanted to bring everybody aware to that side of it because of my experiences.
Thank you.
All right?
Yep. Anyone else? Bruce will say anything.
This is like Wild Bill, which right now are, are staying alive, but not easily. And then to completely eliminate the parking that is close to our stores would in fact destroy us. We have to compete with other businesses for parking that have more, shall we say, more turnover than we do. Our business is mainly people who are driving through our town for tourism. A lot of it is also for Wild Bill, and sometimes we draw on each other. And if that turn lane does go in there and parking, which are, I think, I do believe we lie right in there where that half a block starts getting narrowed down for the turn lane. Every day, we get a customer comes in and says, wow, we've never been in your store before. We didn't know it was this nice. We never stopped because we just, there was always some, you know, no, no parking. There was no easy way to get in. And then we start seeing them all the time after that. Hopefully, we look forward to the fact that the town will, will have an upgrade. Trust me, if we do. We just want to be around when the upgrade is done. So we want everybody to take into consideration those, you know, those things. It's going to be hard on every business in this room to stay open through a complete slowdown. And hopefully, all of them though, in, over the course of the next two years before this begins, they need to be putting money away on the side just to get them through those, hopefully, six months, which will probably turn into fifteen months. Because I also read up on a place in Detroit, they did a three-quarter block area, and it took them fifteen months to get through it. And there was, we have opportunities behind our buildings. There is parking back there if it was cleaned up back there prior to them setting up this construction where customers would get used to parking behind the buildings and being able to have clean alleys to walk up to, to Main Street, maybe to get into the local stores. But you got the Wool Young Building, which is, which is completely overgrown and destroyed, and that would be easy parking. I know our building has parking and all along back there, but it needs to be widened and cleaned up a little bit. That's all I really got to say.
I got the map. I'll get it, bring it in.
I don't know what anybody else experienced when April hit.
Oh, yeah.
But Route 52 just being shut down for a month to five weeks, whatever that was, I lost about fifty-five percent of what I would normally do on that month. And as a small business and a new business, yeah, that was, that is, it's tough. You know, especially being a new business, and, and that was just being closed down for five or six weeks?
And not completely.
So that's just the taste of what we're probably getting ready to experience. And I'm telling you, and my concern, I mean, I know there's a lot of people concerned. So Kelly's concerned, it's going to affect his business down there for Pete's Pete from one end to the other. It's going to affect every one of us.
This is behind Pete's Pete, down the alley. This is Rick Bender's building. Get twelve or fifteen lots, that'd keep me in business. It's behind Rosenberger's, and it's cleaned up.
Is that behind Brad Tebby?
Yeah. No, it's behind Nix East. That's behind Brad.
I don't think you can get into that lot.
Yeah, we talked about that. This is by, this is Bill's and OKI parts. Bill's wanting to tear the back of his building off, pave all of that. That'd be great for you guys, to keep you in business. This is right between the Wood Apple and Eagles parking lot. I'm a Gaddy Connell's owner. They know the lot, but that's some of the ones he's looking at. They said there's state money there, but we can do it. No parking on Main Street 2017, whole summer. I don't have any, I don't have a parking lot. I'm done. I'm toasted. So is those guys? So is you guys? A bunch of us?
I don't know that, I didn't ask that question. I said that it'll be one strip. It'll go one side at a time. Whether they're going to not have any parking on the opposite side or not, I'm not sure of now. I can find out.
I tell you what, they got a bad track record. I talked to later in Fortville that I gave the paper. They promised her flaggers on each side. One mile of road. They come and shut both ends down. Her route for her customer to get to, they went six miles around. She said they destroyed her. And she said, that was like three years ago, and she said, she doesn't have any business. Everybody found new places to shop and sit in this flat line there. Rushville, same thing. Talked to the mayor up there. We're going to keep it open. They shut it down from the River Tracall out to Loafmark. The Rush County Hospital lost a million dollars in revenue tonight, I'll tell you later. You lost your school right up there too, right? You lost.
I was, I was involved in that. It was, and I've never seen them yet do something for six months. It's every project, you go to every town around here, and at least it's been a year and a half project. And like I says, as soon as they touch utilities, the timeframe just goes up the window. My suggestion is, they can come in with one of those big road graders, grinders, and they can start one end of town, and they grind the whole town in a day, five, eight inches down. Come back through the next day, repave it. Within three or four days, they're out of here. Why, why does it have to be a six-month or a year and a half project? Come in, grind the top surface off, come back, lay new surface down, and go home.
Do it again another seven years.
Yeah, and, and they'll say, well, it won't last that long. Well, at least everybody's still open. And if it lasts six, seven, eight years, well, then do it again in six, seven, eight years. The states go through all kind of money at you, and you're going to have visions of the finished product, but at what cost? You might be burnt off not taking their money. That's my opinion.
A lot of the concerns that you had this evening, we also had at that meeting. You were here to support it, but we did convey it to them then. We will continue. And I feel like now that you know what's going on, you'll be more proactive in keeping abreast of what's going on and helping us help you. Now, as far as the parking, yeah, we could help you, but I don't know that we can mandate it. You know, that's, that's kind of up to you guys to work out amongst yourselves with our help, but we will continue to work with you, and we're glad you're here. And, you know, that's really all we can say right now. We're new to the project as well.
I think the idea that you're wanting to start right now is great because this gives us a couple of years to plan for the parking behind the buildings, plan on trying to use Franklin Avenue somehow or the alley in between there and Main Street. And it's, I've got, I wrote down a lot of things before we came today that, the things that we had already discussed in our meeting, and to start working on it right away. So it's not something that, we're not doing this so we can shut down businesses. We're trying to make the town better, and we understand all these concerns and the good advice over here about his experience with it. So I think this is, this is a good thing to hear.
We've worked with Endot. I've been on the board approximately thirty years or so. The stories I'm, I'm hearing now is, is a lot different than what I've actually had with Endot itself. They've seemed to always work with us. I can see how these circumstances would happen, but I would say that it would be our, our job to go to them and give them the information that we have received and ask them if they can make sure this doesn't happen in Brookville.
I think should be a writing. People I talk to, they look them straight in the face and tell them, and they don't do it.
Did you say most of the problem doesn't come from the state? It comes from contractors? Is that what you said?
They're saying both. Rushville said, I talked to the mayor, said, stay together. Get the police, fire, emergency, but stay together, keep on them, get in and write them. Have a meeting with them once a week. If there's concerns that come up, have a sit-down.
Even during the course of the project, you cannot leave them unchecked.
Right.
Because that road supervisor out there on the street, he don't care about you guys. He's just trying to get his job done, cheapest and fastest way to get out. He's going to go home, like I said, next town over, don't care.
What is it going to do to the side streets? Is it going to affect the side streets if, if traffic's going to be running along the side streets? I mean, is there concern that the side streets might be damaged?
It's too early to answer that.
Okay.
I'm sure they will get that. The whole town's going to get that. How will we?
I also heard one way that they could do it was they were going to do a block at a time.
That was mentioned, and that's one of the things that was discussed that day, but...
If they did that, I mean, like I said, some of our businesses predominantly just impulse people to say, oh, all right, stop.
We can take a couple of weeks.
I know.
The whole summer?
Well, if it's six months, I think I could survive six months. And if once you put me on six months, I mean, the new business can't save that much money in that short a time just to, to survive zero.
I'm John Corner, Corners Country Kitchen. Talking with Kelly and stuff on, like, shutting down blocks at a time and doing one side block at a time, one side block at a time. That made more sense than anything. If that's the way to do it, I mean, that would, to me, make more sense than anything.
The answer I got from Endot, the person I talked to.
Then you go in and do the rest.
Yeah, well, look, he talked this stuff more than you.
I talked to a man from Endot, it was yesterday morning, and I asked him what happened to the one block at a time situation, and he said, our engineers feels the traffic flow will be better.
As a state highway.
With, with one at a time.
So he was agreeing?
Me what?
He was agreeing with?
With one side.
One side at a time?
That'd be the flow of traffic going through, not the flow of traffic stopping.
People controlling. That's what we're assuming.
But there needs to be a lot more conversation too.
And there will be.
Are you guys going to be listening to any conversations?
I think so. We'll be having conversations with them.
But again, you know...
Can we sit down on that?
Yeah, and we all can.
All can.
Some of them are public meetings, I'm sure there will be.
I think the major decision that we have to, that will have to be made, is whether or not to widen Main Street. Because if we widen Main Street, then that's when you get into the, the big project.
And the water.
And, and the utilities. It will definitely affect utilities because a lot of the meters are too close to the curb already. And it would also mean taking out the trees and all that kind of stuff.
We missed that one, though. If we're going to do that, we should have dealt with, put the water lines.
Well, I know. And so that's, that's basically where we're at. If we didn't widen Main Street, I mean, it's a matter of just repaving Main Street, and they would still have to do, I believe, the ADA, the curbs or the, at the intersections. But... But it would be a lot less costly to not widen Main Street, but as anybody that drives down Main Street knows, it's pretty tight when you're passing a semi or a motor home or something like that. So that's where we're at as far as making a decision.
Going slow through town's not a bad thing.
No.
You know, and you know, some of these improvements are going to speed up traffic.
Does anybody know what the speed limit is on Main Street? It's supposed to be 20 mile an hour.
Until you get to 90.
30.
Exactly. But I'm going to tell you right now, you could make a fortune if people were giving tickets on Main Street. So widen that street, if they don't monitor the speed limit on this thing, it's even going to be faster than people going through there instead of doing 20 mile an hour. And it should be 20 mile an hour.
The average speed is 45, I would say, on average.
On average, I'd say it is too.
The curbs that are historic, the limestone curbs, how would you preserve those?
What they told us, that they would take the stone, it's limestone or laurel stone, and they would take it to the north end of town and replace...
Relent.
Any, which makes sense to me and I'd like to see that happen. And they would give us the ones that they didn't.
I just wasn't sure if they would just leave two of them with the new ones and say that.
A kicker on Rushville is, I just remembered this, they got Rushville all done, opened it up, the state come down to inspect it. It didn't meet their inspection, they shut it down again and re-ground it and repaved it again. So it was shut down for like a year and a half, went past inspection and they ended up closing it down, re-ground it and repaved it again. But that's, I'm just telling you, this is what you deal with when you deal with the state and the contractors. But they end up doing it twice because it didn't pass inspection first time.
So it seems, appears to me, we're all kind of on the same page tonight.
I think, yeah.
So I think if it's all right, you guys will move on? You okay?
We have an interest in the community and the restoration of the nativity figures. And what I'd like to do in the next couple of minutes is present a proposal to the board and if possible, get your okay to move forward. From a distance, the Brookville community nativity figures don't look too bad, but up close presents a different picture. Paint is worn, scratched, faded on all of the figures and some even have holes in them probably from rough handling, stack storage over their years of service. As they are now, they're serviceable, but our community can come together and we can do better. The following proposal is therefore placed before the Brookville Town Council. Transport the figures to a large pole barn here in the Brookville area where the holes can be fixed and the figures repainted in preparation for this season's display. Contact has been made with Pam Denton, Franklin County High School art teacher, and Jerry Manus, retired Franklin County High School art teacher, to lead a group of art student volunteers after school and on weekends to perform the task. With professional supervision, quality materials and a good place to work, this project will come together with the desired results. Pam was excited when I told her about the idea to involve her students. She saw an opportunity for teamwork, a sense of pride and accomplishment and the opportunity for her students to learn the art of airbrushing. In order to accomplish the task, Jerry estimated it costs around 150 to 200 bucks. It's not a great big sum, but we still have to buy some paint. He explained that he can mix any color needed for primary colors of red, yellow and blue into a white base. Secondary colors of green, orange and purple would only raise the number of cans of paint needed to seven. There are many different colors now in use on the nativity figures and with Jerry's expertise in mixing, this will make the materials procurement process much simpler. We'll also need patching material for the holes such as fiberglass or Bondo. Exactly which or what is best still has to be determined. In order to provide a small amount of financing necessary for this project, Fred Chapello has been contacted regarding fundraising. Ideas from donation jars located in local businesses, special offering contributions from local churches, or to publish a nativity fund held at local banks where citizens can donate, all of these have been discussed. Fred particularly likes the idea of involving the churches. Doing this rather than just a few of us getting together and throwing $20 bills into a hat presents an opportunity for community involvement in the project. The timeline for this project starts tonight with your approval to transport the nativity figures from the police station to the pole barn. Wayne Monroe, he's in charge of transportation. Arranging and publishing a work schedule for the art students is next, along with fundraising starting as soon as possible. It's important to start soon so that we can beat the cold weather that's coming that inhibits paint from drying. We've got half of August, all of September and October and most of November to accomplish the task. There's the names and phone numbers of folks involved so far and if you all say yes, we can get on with it. Thank you.
Any questions from this committee? Darryl made the motion to approve the project second.
I'll second.
Sam second, all in favor?
Opposed.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Start tomorrow.
There's only one little problem. The county got a little letter last year that we couldn't put them on the four-house yard. They're going to go out.
That was addressed at another meeting back last whenever, so that's not what we're here with somebody about.
Well, that's their problem. That's what I look at.
There's going to be some help.
Well, they'll be ready.
But we're going to be ready.
Okay.